Hello, you're very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup with me, Roisin Neclerick. I'm going sooner again today, Paul is on his day job. So my guest for this video is councillor Ellen Troy for the Fingal County Council, representing the Castle Knock local electoral area in Dublin West. In 2024, councillor Troy was a first-time political candidate for the local elections. Ellen received an astounding 1,674 first preference votes on the first count, taking in 11.86% of the total LE vote. Ellen was elected on the eighth count and took the fourth seat in the sixth seat of the LEA of Castle Knock, with a final total vote of 2,087 votes. Councillor Troy has been a longstanding activist, supporting countless initiatives across the wider Dublin 15 area. Councillor Troy has campaigned on educational issues, having been on the committee for the building of the Castle Knock Community College and as serving on the St. Brigid's National School PTA and board of management on the Mount Sackville Secondary School PTA. Councillor Troy has served as the parish pastoral council of a local church and has set up and led the family group and choir for over 20 years. Ellen is the secretary of the Pines Hadley and Beach Park Lawn Neighbourhood Watch Group. Councillor Troy and her family have been a long time involvement in St. Brigid's G A Club and are passionate supporters of all local sporting groups. Ellen, you are very, very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup.
Thanks very much, thank you.
Ellen, you have been a real community activist. No wonder you've received such an outstanding first time at first preference vote.
Thank you very much, yeah, I've always enjoyed being very, very much involved in my community, local community. Yeah, it's natural to me. Between church choirs and schools, G A clubs, tidy towns, any actual thing that's going on, I would be love to be involved. This is normal, this is natural. So when the time came to go into politics, I would never have dreamt of doing it, to be honest. Only I became so disillusioned with the fact that half a million adults are living with their parents. It was the housing situation that really got me, it really. Because I was looking at my four children thinking, are they going to be with us forever? What are we going to do? How can we house these kids, you know? So that got me going, to be honest, you know, the injustice of it all. Like, why should they suffer, you know? My parents, myself, we were able to afford a home. And how could it be out of reach of like two nurses, two, you know, two hardworking people, a couple that are well educated, doing everything right, and not able to afford a home? So that's what got me going, really, to be honest.
Well, my daughter's a doctor and she can't even afford a home.
That's terrible, yeah.
Doctors, and doctors are over in Melbourne and they're saying, I read out in the text earlier on, I'll read it out again, that one sent a message to me, and I'm just going to get this now and I will read this out. This is what a doctor said about Ireland, about coming back. Inflation is just insane. The price of butter has gone up 45%, so has chocolate, you know. Fuel 50%. The average family in Ireland has to spend 6,000 euros more on groceries than they did four years ago. And now we are caught in the position, this is doctors in Melbourne, who we need to come back from Australia, come back to Ireland. And now we are caught in the position where any savings you bring home to Ireland from Australia is worthless. Bringing your worthless Australian dollars and converting to euros only to spend it on goods and services with 50% price hike in comparison to four years ago.
I know, shocking, shocking.
So if this is what the high professionals of doctors and nurses and frontline services.
I know, shocking, it's unbelievable. Yeah, it's actually frightening, like for me to go to work. I'm a biochemist and now I'm two days a week down because of my council work. But when I was going over to the south side, if I were still to be working full-time, it would cost me 1,200 a year just to go on the toll, the M50, 1,200. So you have to earn 2,400, as you know. So imagine my salary, that amount of money going out just to use something that we've already paid for, it's like it's a cash cow for the government, they're just making pay. It's really shocking. And so like that's hard-pressed commuters, the fuel, all the other taxes that go without, the carbon tax on the fuel, and then the tolls. And if you come from Meath and you're working on the south side, I think it could be three or you could end up 3,000 a year. That is before you start working, that's to go to work. You know, so that's one of my campaigns, actually, I'm actually, it really hurts because I was in that predicament, spending 1,200 of my hard-earned money just to use the road.
And the owner of the toll isn't even Irish. So the revenue that is being brought in from all the tolls in Ireland is going outside the country. It's not even going into the local economy or building new roads.
Well, actually, since 2015 or 20, oh, 20, I'm not sure of the actual date, I think maybe 2015. The government bought the M50, so we do own it, that's the worst part. We own it, so the government know that their crippling families are already hard-pressed and commuting with this huge extra tax. So it's a tax on workers, highway robbery, M50, highway robbery. No, it's actually, it really, really gets me, it really does. Because they know, actually, I have got that as one of my motions for the council. And unfortunately, we never seem to get through the agenda. So I haven't got to get a vote on that with all the other councillors. But when you think about it, Fianna Fáil and Fianna Gail, since, you know, they've been in government for so long, they're not going to entertain my request to either really reduce the M50 tolls or to scrap them, they're not going to be interested in that. You know, that's revenue for the government. It's, they should be exposed, you know, it really is terrible.
Well, what they should be is telling the general public, the Irish public, where that money is specifically going.
I know, I know, I know, yeah.
And that would be, but you're a county councillor, could you get that a motion through the senator or through Paddy Tobin, the party leader?
Paddy, Paddy Tobin has brought that up, you know, oh yeah, he's brought that up in the doll over and over again. And from Meath as well, there's extra tolls before they even get to the M50. So anybody living in Meath who works on the south side of Dublin will use tolls before they get to the M50. So it's costing such a lot of money for people. It's actually criminal, really. No, Paddar's tried hard, but it's like everything else, you know. Fianna Fáil and Fianna Gail have been too easy, sitting where they are for too long. And I really, that's how I feel, I want to rouse the people up to say, you have got a voice, you can do something. So vote in the right people who are going to stand for you. And I feel so sorry for hard-pressed people in this crisis of the, like, the cost of living. And people, I know they can't afford, like, the price of petrol, like, it's almost putting people over the edge, you know. It's, and I feel, I really feel for them, so I'm very motivated. I know I'm on the council, but I am so eager to get into the doll, to be honest. I want to stand for the rights of the ordinary person who is struggling. I see so many of them, like I was thinking, you know, what you were going to ask me about, what do people report, you know, what do they say to you? Now, there are what I call sort of simple things like potholes and trees and things that are, you know, annoying, they are very annoying. But then you've got life issues, housing, the homeless people, the children that are non-verbal, who can't get a speech therapist, it's really shocking, it's just so bad. And then I spoke to a woman and she was minding her father who was living with her and she had a teenage girl who was doing her leaving cert and she was trying to, you know, move to a bigger house, the girl was doing her leaving cert. And she was shared in a room with her older sister who had a baby who was crying at night and that. And you just think, my God, like it was so difficult for this family, you know. So I've seen people, you're on one hand, you see people in these situations and then it's almost, you know, like, you know, trees that are, you know, causing, now they do cause a lot of havoc because a lot of the wrong type of tree was built in our area and the footpaths are destroyed and people's walls are destroyed. But you hear that and then you hear the real problems. You know, a child, imagine having a child that was non-verbal at six years of age, yeah. So I am very driven to make change, you know, big change, you know.
He was non-verbal until I was five.
Yeah, a six-year-old, actually, a six-year-old child. And when we spoke at the door, the child, I said, oh, what's the doggy called? And the little sister of the six-year-old was trying to say to her brother, you tell the lady, you tell the lady, and she was trying to teach him how to speak. Oh my goodness, yeah.
I went to speech therapy all my life, up until I was thirty, yeah. When I was born, because I had no nose and I had no palate, I had just a big hole. All the doctors told my mother, all the specialists told my mother that I'd be deaf, dumb and mute.
Oh, look at you, oh my God, that's very moving, isn't it? Look at you.
I'm all for advocating for speech therapists, especially, there should be at least two in every school.
Yeah, yeah.
Because in the amount of children now with dyslexia or non-verbal autism and any of the learning difficulties or anybody with any kind of disability, they need.
Yeah, wouldn't you be proud of a country that treated their children with special needs really well? That's a, that's a, it's a real sign when they, you know, they are not educating enough child psychologists and speech and language therapists. So no matter what they did, they still wouldn't get to the end of the big long waiting list. They need immediately to make those courses double, triple the amount of people who can study these subjects. And it's such high points to do them, when actually in England or Scotland, you know, they're more plentiful, there are places. What are we thinking about in this country? Like with the C S O figures, they know how many children are in difficulty and they know how many places they've got in university for these courses. There's no adding up what's going on, it's actually appalling. You know, I try to keep lighthearted about it, but it can be, it can be, you know, it can be, it can draw you down, but it doesn't actually, it motivates me. Because I really, I really want to ask these questions. You know that these children have no, are on a waiting list, some of them for five, six, seven, eight years. How would you feel? And as well, it's very often the uneducated mum or dad who can't fight the corner for the child the way that somebody more educated could, you know, that gets me too. So I like to help people in those situations if I can.
And that brings me on to a point, you've told us your motivation for running into politics. But before we get on to my next thing, you ran, you received the 2,087 votes at the county council. You missed out on the general election by 1,077 votes.
Yeah, 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 it was remarkable, actually, to be honest. But do you know what I actually think, Roisin? People know from speaking to me at the door that I am a genuine person. I actually had a very good full-time job, if I, you know, if I wanted to stick it. I've chosen to do this and I want to make a difference. And people get that, as I firmly believe that, that people understand that from you and that will never leave me, that's why I'm in this, I really care. So, and I will, I will question, you know, and I will, I will say. I'm not afraid to point out what I think is going wrong, you know. So I mean, I'm enjoying it, there's a lot to learn though, there's a lot in the council that's frustrating. But there's a lot of good, I was surprised at a lot of things as well, so.
I want to come to that a little bit later on, what you've learned as, now we've come to the the end of your first year as a county councillor, a little bit later on. You ran as a candidate for Eain Two. What was your deciding factor to choose Eain Two as a political party to run for election for?
Well, to be honest, I campaigned for the eighth and I worked very hard at that. And I say to everybody that if you're standing on the principle of life and the human right to life, it's a big deal, it was far more difficult to canvass for that. So it was a great runner for the local and the general election. And of course, when that was lost, I heard Paddy Tobin speaking and I just thought, he's a man of conviction, a strength of character and he's the type of person that I would believe in and I would like to follow. Now, I wasn't going into politics until I was motivated. And then, of course, as I said earlier, my children at the time, you know, finished university and me looking at the amount of adults living with their families and their parents, knowing that there was a struggle for the purchase of a house, I said, no, I'm actually, I'm actually going to get involved. So I could have gone with Fianna Fáil, could have gone with Fianna Gail, no. They have made this, they have been in power since the foundation of the state. So Eain Two was the obvious party for me. So a man of conviction too, great guy. And since I've joined, I've had nothing but support and nothing but really good friends. You know, really very, very good, sound people. So, yeah, I chose Eain Two, I know I was approached by others, but there's, I know, I considered. Maybe people might think it's a selfish thing, but because I have four children all at the stage of the house purchase and time, in relationships and all of that, I said, no, 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 these guys have caused this issue, they've caused it, so not going with them. So, yeah, and I think it was a great choice, very, very happy with what's happened with Eain Two and how we've progressed. In fact, we got the biggest vote, you know, the fastest growing party, the most increase in the general election of any party, so thrilled with that. And great to be part of it, yeah.
That's great to hear, because it's a new party, it's coming out of its infancy now to being, you know, putting down roots and getting structure.
Yeah.
You also before the local elections, that we had the 2024 referendums.
Yeah, oh, that was a, that was a great time and it was a thrill. And after we won, like I would say, Eain Two won those referendums, it was thrilling to go canvassing after that. And it was actually something that was really helpful on the door. Because if you said, if they said, oh, Eain Two, and I would say, oh yes, you know, the party that stood there and, you know, for women in the home and the referendum, the durable, we'd talk about the durable relations and all that. I said, we won this. And if they smiled and said, yeah, didn't you do well? I knew, oh, we're on to a bit of support here. But sometimes they sort of reclined and said, oh, well, and then I knew they're not, they're not supporting us, you know. So it was actually a very good bar to, but it was thrilling. It was, it was great to have got that result and it was great.
No, no, as well, and the videos, I'll put the video in the description box. And I interviewed Paddy Tobin in the Dublin Castle, I canvassed.
Great, good.
And on the channel and on Women Ireland channel, I went up to Dublin and all, and even Don Leary and Grafton Street and Mary Street and Henry Street and O'Carroll Street, canvassing.
Lovely, yeah.
And Don Leary and parts of Cork and here in Kilkenny as well, so yeah. So delighted with the result, but I knew, I just had a, I knew it couldn't win. I just knew by the wording of it, it couldn't win.
I wasn't sure, I actually wasn't sure myself, you know, to be honest, I'm being honest. I didn't think we'd win by that much, it was a thrill, it was great.
So between the, your first time candidate and, you know, with great votes. So you are, and as I said on the intro, you are really a community activist in your area where you live, in the school, in the church, in the choir. You help get the school built in your local area.
Yeah.
So you must be very involved in education and you're on the PTA as well.
Well, my children are. Yeah, sorry, my children are out of school now, so I was, I served on both PTA's, St. Brigid's, the primary school, and Mount Sackville, the local secondary school, and also CCC, the school that, the Castle Knock Community College that my boys went to. And I was very proud and always told the boys that before ever any of them were thought about, I was campaigning for a school for them. And it was lovely to see them all go to the school and do very well in the school, great school. So I was there on the PTA too and the board of management of the primary school. So now my children are all out of school, yeah, but I was involved in the G A club as well and the tennis club too. And the cups, I forget all the things I was involved in, actually. So it was, it was all fun, I had a great time doing it. I really like being of service to people and, you know, pulling my weight, to be a real tidy towns person. And, you know, I love, I love the work that's done in the community. And in my parish as well, you know, I'm a singer and musician and play. And I would have done quite a lot of different things with families too, like liturgical dramas and stuff. And quite great fun, quite great, but absolutely wonderful Easter. Like Holy Week and that, in the church we dramatized Stations of the Cross and it was fantastic, you know. So, yeah, it's, I enjoy it, you can tell I enjoy it, I like it, I liked doing that, you know. So a lot of people would know me. But then when you're out of your own area looking for votes, you know, you depend more on your party leader and the results of the referendum, that helped a lot, that helped a lot. I was just wishing that the actual election was really soon after the referendum, but we had to wait a while, so that was the way, yeah.
Yeah, because the referendum we can march and then the elections, local elections in June, general election was, and the third was really the 30th of November, but the council started the 1st of December.
That's right, you've got it all in one, my goodness. No, I tell you, tell me about it, what a year, but me being new to it all. But you know, part of me, because I was new, I was, it was exciting too, you know. And I have to say, I really enjoyed it because I love having a good old chat with people. I enjoy it and I remember most, you can't remember every detail, but I remember a lot of it, you know. And people remember when you come back again, oh, I remember you were here and, you know. So I actually really do enjoy it, yeah, yeah. The trivial things, as I say, well, I'm not, I'm not saying they're trivial because they're serious to some people and it's important. But, you know, the small things that you can fix, you know, like traffic calming or, as I say, trees, footpaths, potholes, lighting, bins, that's all straightforward. It's the serious things like the children and the homelessness that gets.
Older people.
The older people, yeah.
There's more older people homeless now than ever before in the country. And the poverty of children, children in Ireland living in poverty.
No, we can't, yeah, and actually I'm good on radio tomorrow talking about the the local radio talking about foster care and how they were promised, like the back-to-school grants for children's uniforms and that, and it's going to be means tested for these good people that are taking children and foster children figures have gone up enormously and like we desperately need them and they're going to be means tested, you know. So, you know, I don't know, you'd be very disappointed, you know, at times, you know, when you think about the waste of money that goes on. It's shocking and not to give it to deprived children, you know, children that are suffering in their own home environment and fostered, yeah, yeah.
You were in the educational, you know, you were part of the board of management when your children were in school. And Eain Two have been very vocal about the school curriculum, especially where the gender ideology was. Because I've seen them and I know other politicians who have said quite, they've seen them and they are, they were and are, they are pornographic.
Yeah, 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 it's incredible that what has happened. And I firmly believe if those books were at home for the parents to see and to be going through with their, I mean, how, how would any parent think it was okay for a teacher to discuss things like masturbation and that with little children? The child doesn't even know what you're talking about, it's, no, I, it's serious. And then to tell a child, a little girl, a little boy, they can be a boy or a girl, you can be who you like. I mean, ah, come on, no. I mean, there are, you know, difficulties and there are some children who are very mixed up and have got an issue and they just need great support and they need fairness and they need to be treated with great respect and minded. They don't need to be told, the whole class doesn't need to be told, you know, any of you can be like this if you want to be, you know, you can be whatever you want to be. And that is absolutely nonsense, confusion, trying to, they're confusing a child. And since when did you need all those pages about whether you're a boy or a girl or? Like if I asked my children, who did they like playing with at school? They'd just be playing with whoever would play with them, they didn't care if they were a boy or a girl. They'd go out on the street and play ball with whoever would bounce it back to them.
Yeah.
Making a big deal out of it.
Yeah.
Worried about what somebody is, boy, girl? Or if there is an issue with somebody's sexuality, they just need support, great support all around. And maybe they'll come, you know, whatever will happen when they're adults, you know. Just treat everybody really well, but don't start scaring the life out of other children and telling them they can be.
That's confusing them, that's planting the seed of getting them to be confused, to question things they would never question about, so it's sort of planting the seed to get them to actually question their, oh. Like, I know, I know this sounds terrible, my brother played for prams in dolls. My son played with my daughters, pushed my daughters' prams around in dolls because he saw his sister. Like, my daughter played with all the boys things, that's all natural and.
Dressed up as boys and girls and dressed up whatever way they like, are you? Yeah, I don't know, it's gone too far.
With you being very active in sport and Eain Two are very vocal about, you know, boys playing in sports and men in sports and boys and men going into women's changing rooms and even playing sports, it's just.
The women's, the ladies' gig, like football actually voted and allowed male-born people. Like, it's even difficult speaking about because you're afraid you're going to insult somebody. But somebody who was born a male and is now identifying as a woman, playing football with my daughter. Could you imagine if she got a knock? I mean, the did, boys and girls did play together up until they were about 10 and it's probably going to even change, or probably soon be nine. I mean, they did, boys and girls did play together up until they were about ten, and it's probably gonna even change, or probably soon be nine. Because they're all growing too fast and too strong, and I mean, a man is much stronger physically. And his body, his mass, his speed, the muscle tone, the strength, the weight, and. They could cause a serious accident, so the cost, it could really be really bad, and then. Then you sharing a changing room with them, no, I, 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 actually down in the Phoenix Park, there's. Um, mixed um loos, you know, men and women together, oh, I don't like, I mean, do you know, if you. And I know I was standing there and, and a busload of Americans came off the bus and this woman was saying, hey. You know, a guy coming out of the loo, she got the shock of her life, and I was saying, yeah, this is, this is modern Ireland, you know, we have to. Share, I mean, nothing on the men, but nothing on the men or women, but it's embarrassing if you're not aware. That a man could come out, you can get afraid, men don't like it either, I've spoken to loads of them, don't like it. Um, and if you had a little child there who you were, you know, who'd had an accident or something, and you were washing them. Or you, you would be, you would be embarrassed doing it in front of a man, or you'd be embarrassed for your little child, you know, to be.
I just think it's not safe, it's not a safe place when, when children and women are vulnerable in the bathroom, in the place. And I know I, it's happened to me, and I just went, oh no, this is not right.
Uh-huh, so did I.
Now, I've also been where I've known that men, the, the men in the petrol station where the men's toilets were closed off. And there was a man dying for the toilet, and I went in, he says, is anybody in here? A man needs to go to the toilet, will we let him in? And they said, yeah, we're going out now, then we, and we waited until he finished, and then we went in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're not, we're not being unreasonable, but it's just if you come out and you, you, you meet a man, you get a, right?
You do, it's not, it's not safe.
Yeah.
I don't, I didn't feel safe.
I know, I know, and I have a house full of men, but like, there's something about the personal space. When you think you're going into where women are, and, and it would be terrible if you brought in a little child, you know, you might have had to take their. Underwear off or change them or whatever, and a man comes at them, I feel for the man too.
Yeah.
I mean, the most of them would be so embarrassed, you know, yeah.
So you've been a county councillor for now a year.
Uh-huh.
So what would you say that you, the, the things that you have discovered about yourself? You've learnt about uh the local, running as a local um representative for Aintu as a county councillor. And what have you learnt about the county council? There are three questions in one.
Okay, um, well, I have been, there are, there, there's two ways, I suppose, of looking at it, there's very positive side. And there's a bit of a negative to it as well, because, well, the positives are that, I was amazed actually at how. Fast, um, my representations were dealt with, you know, if you wrote in, um, asked about. Traffic camming or lighting or, you know, was it gonna be parked, wasn't cut for a while or whatever. There was, there was, there was a great response to your request, and I thought, oh, that's wonderful, this is great. And so the simple things were dealt with quite quickly, but then if there was other questions, say like about. Empty boarded up um council homes, when you knew that there was families desperate for a home. And you knew there was like five or six boarded up houses in an area, you could get really frustrated when you hear or see. Um, houses boarded up for over a year, and you're saying, you know, and you're asking the council, what is going on? That frustrated the life out of me, and I found that really taxing, but. Um, I needed to get my head around all of the long meetings now. There's a council meeting once a month for the full council, so that's forty councillors. All from the whole area of Fingal, and can you imagine forty people? And a lot of what is uh discussed. Is the same old, same old every month where they don't get the agenda covered. So you've prepared your motion, you're ready, and you want to talk about, say, the M fifty or say the. Presidential election, like I had a motion there about the, um, the uh people in the north being able to vote in our. Presidential election, and the last, say, the last two months, they never got hardly near any of the motions. So then they're put off, so then the, those go to the next month and the next month, I found that, and then I would say like, why? The, the chair should get through this agenda, like, so I have found that very frustrating, very. And then what happens is, a lot that goes on there is, the councillors are thanking. The staff of the council for different things, and the all is very repetitive. So if one starts thanking them, they all start, and it's just a waste of time. I'd actually like to bring up a motion about that, just say, can we just say thank you all at the beginning and just get on with the, the, the work? You know, it's a little bit like it's televised or it's on the net, so people want to be seen to be. Talking about their area, it's just, it's not getting the work done, that's my opinion, so I found that really, really frustrating. And the, and the meetings are long, and then when you come out, you think, oh, don't, we didn't get to hear any of the motions, we didn't discuss them. We didn't to vote on them, we didn't get far, and then we've got two local area meetings every month. And they, they're very productive, I have to say, they are much better, and then you get to know your local councillors and. So it, it's been good, but I've, I've had to learn a lot about uh li, listening, listening and debating. And, um, there's a lot to read, I'm shocked at how much work there is, to be honest, very shocked. So, eh, um, I would say all round, it's been a very busy year. For me in particular, because of the, the, the general election too.
Yeah.
But I'm finding my feet, I'm getting there, and I'm, I'm pleasantly surprised at how. Uh, the council have responded to my representations, I, I mean, I, I didn't know what I was expecting, but, you know. You know, pleading for them about particular cases of housing and being able to see. At least two of the people that I represented getting housed, so that, that's always a great joy, do you know? But it's not enough, you know, there's a demand, and there's a demand, terrible demand, and then, as I say, I'm so frustrated with these. Boarded up houses for far too long, I want to, actually, I've driven up to an area. And I'm still waiting on three houses to be opened up that have been bought now, it was a serious fire in this central one, and it was. Um, it was to do with a, a drugs feud, you know, and petrol bombed house went on fire. The houses either side were burnt to, damaged, so three homes, so. That was in March twenty twenty four, and so we're now, what are we now, July twenty twenty five? So it's a year and four months or, or.
Yeah.
And we're in a crisis, and that's three homes, and from those three homes, you can see another. Five or six homes that are boarded up, and so a, a man on that street said to me, I'm embarrassed, he said. My granddaughter made her communion and the family came up to visit us, and this is a nice area. But look at all the boarded up houses, I said, I know, you think it was a real ghetto, you know, so. I, the, the, sometimes the, the work is fast and it's good, and they do. They do do great work, but I know their hands are tied as well by the government, the government's even cut the housing. Yeah, for, for the social housing, it's, it was cut by fifty percent. Are the government thinking about? In a housing crisis and they cut their funding, I, I don't, it's hard to understand really.
And we seem to be going from crisis to crisis to crisis to crisis.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Crisis, and Ireland is a country in crisis.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Hear that from e, everybody, um, the, the cost of living, to housing, to immigration, to health.
Health.
Education, to even tax, to everything, multi-tax.
I know, oh, I know.
And even down to the toll tax.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The, the highway manager, she said, you know.
I'd be wrong, right, yeah.
Yeah, so, but yeah, it's, it's gonna be interesting what happens in the next uh end of. Uh, the next half of twenty two, uh, twenty five, when the door goes into recess. And we come, they come back in the middle of September, it's gonna be interesting to see what happens and what develops over the summer months. And what the, the politicians and the government and Dawn Erin are gonna come back to in the middle of September.
Yeah, it'll be very interesting, like, their, their record for this year, I mean, with record homelessness, record high rents. Record price houses, like, it's just, and a waste of money and then no accountability. How dare they, like, if that was, if me and my place of work, if I, you know, wasted so much money when you think about the. Bicycle shed and the security hut, when you think about what, like, when you think of the waste.
Yeah.
Like, I, I'm conscious of that, you know, that this is taxpayers' money that's been wasted. And these taxpayers are working hard and they're in crisis in their own homes, like, children are, are in poverty. Now, worse than it was, like.
And older people and children in poverty, and the, the children go missing in, in, in social care, which is. And Padda has been uh very vocal on that, and he's also been very vocal in child trafficking. He's the only um T G in the door to talk about child trafficking. And uh we did a video on child trafficking, Ireland was on tier two of uh, uh, the world's watch list.
Oh.
For child trafficking with Romania and Saudi Arabia, um, but no, um. So it's gonna be very interesting to see what develops of, uh, June, of the summer months, because we're just gonna be going crisis after crisis. And what more crisis will develop, will they have to come back sooner, who knows?
I know, hmm.
So, but uh councillor Ellen Troy, it's been absolute delight speaking to you and getting to know you.
I'm happy.
Having you on with us, and I hope that, you know, if there's anything that we can do to help you and get your message out. If anything, any issues or topics that you'd like to highlight, we're here for you to do that, um, for county councillors.
Well, that's great, thanks very, very much for that, that's, but I've really enjoyed chatting to you too.
And you have to come on again.
Yeah, I certainly will, and, and I, I'm going to make a campaign now out of the M fifty, I think it's.
Yes.
Graceful, that the government can just fill their, their, their coffers with money from hard-pressed people. Who are getting up early and going to work and getting caught on that toll, one thousand two hundred would do a nice little holiday for a family, wouldn't it?
It would actually, it could, it could help with their, with their mortgage, it could help with the child, it could help, it could help with their, their healthcare, it could help. You know, put their children through college, education, put food on the table, shoes.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, well, very good luck, and keep us up to date on everything, especially any campaign you're doing, uh, we're here, as I said, and.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing from you in the future, and I know Paul Brophy is raging that he's working today and I'm interviewing you. Maybe next time you'll, you'll get to meet Paul.
Ah, that'd be lovely, thanks, Rosine, very much, I really enjoyed it, you, you made it very um simple, it was like I was just having a chat with a friend, so.
You're just gonna call the barge, isn't it?
Yeah, ah, yeah, thank you.
Councillor uh Ellen Troy, thank you so much indeed for joining the Irish Political Roundup.
Thank you.